Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest. You are watching a Fact TV presentation of the BFUHS School Board Meeting.
I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Bellis Falls Union High School's school district. For our senior members, pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Adjustments to the agenda. I would like to add an executive session right after director's comments.
Can I add one, Molly?
Yeah, the executive session will be for personnel matter.
Molly?
Yes.
We also...
Hold on, June's next. Yes, June.
Can I add to 7B, an update on the therapy dogs?
Jason?
Just, you said a personnel matter on your executive session. Does that include student matters as well?
It does not, but we can add student matter if that's what we need to do. Anyone else? So many adjustments to the agenda. So, right now, I have 7B, therapy dog update, executive session for personnel matter and student matter. Communication and public comments. Is there any? John, do you like to speak?
No.
Okay.
I'm a member of the public.
Yeah, no, I love it. Anything on the screen, Ricky? Are you modifying? Are you watching?
I got it. I don't see anyone up there.
Okay. So, it looks like there... Review and approve board minutes of February 13th. It feels like a long time ago.
Yeah, it does.
I didn't print it off, but I don't think my unit wasn't present, but then it was quoted for the...
Coffee didn't look there.
Okay, so we need to add Brenda to the list.
And I had a question. It says under 5, which is page 2 of 6, it says... Review and approve board minutes of January 24th and January 31st, and January 9th will be approved at the next meeting. Did we approve? I don't remember approving any of those.
Yeah, there's some January.
So, it looks like...
But we haven't had a regular scheduled meeting since...
So, it looks like we have not approved January 9th yet. We'll have to put that on next meeting because we don't have those minutes to look at unless everyone's read them online, you know. But you made the motion to approve the 24th and the 31st.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, the 9th is the one I was questioning, yeah.
Any other adjustments to the minutes for February 13th? When I have a motion to approve the minutes with corrections of adding Brenda to the members in attendance.
I make that motion.
Is there any discussion? Doesn't appear to be any. We have, and we have Priscilla on...
She is online, yes.
Okay. And anyone else? No one else that's a board member, correct? Online?
No, that's the only one, sorry.
Okay, so we got a roll call because I, we have one member on Zoom. So, Priscilla, I'm going to call you first to approve the minutes for February 13th with the corrections made to add Brenda's name to the members attending.
Okay, Molly, yes. I'm not sure. Can you also, though, just take the people in the room the other way? Or do you have to really call all of them?
I'm going to call everyone because we are on a Zoom, and that's how I've been taught I have to do it.
Okay, whatever you, whatever you think is right, that's, that's fine.
So, you're a yes?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I have, sorry, Jason?
Yeah.
Brenda?
Yes.
Darcy?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
I'm having a brain cramp. Tanya, thank you. And Dave?
Yes.
All right, so the minutes are passed for February 13th. We are moving on to the principal's report. Mr. Brody?
Okay, got a lot of things that are on there for a little while. Class of 2027 registration. We had a well-attended registration day at the high school last Wednesday. We had about 70% of students and parents able to meet with their advisor and confirm their class signups and talk about programming and tour the building. It was a good show. SAT testing. SAT testing will take place at Bellis Falls Union High School on April 25th for our students only. Again, we're just offering it to our kids on that day. Enrichment opportunity on March 21st. We took the whole school to see Your In Town Musical by David Stern. The show offers both educational and for our students. Kids, kids seem to really like it. I haven't got all the feedback in yet, but I can share that with you when it all comes in. We did an advisory at the end of it to collect it, and we're slowly getting it in from staff. Generators. We've got the circuit breaker finally working, and they are now working, as far as I know, for an emergency purpose. We now need to do the last part of putting the monitors on to collect data for emissions and then have them stack tested in order to do our demand response. The generators will now work in case of... So, which is a long time coming, but we got that. Maps testing. We'll also do our third round of maps testing on April 25th from 8 to 11 for our 9th graders as well. We're number six. We're moving on to the new Cognia testing, which is called the BT cap testing now. It's the old S back. They settled on the new test of standardized testing. And we'll administer them on May 9th and May 11th. 9th graders will do ELA in math, and the 11th graders on the May 9th will do the science. Hattie Murray's been working on a Earth Fest Day. She's still working the science department and other teachers to pull this together. It's, it's a collaboration with the central elementary 4th grade students, where they will, they'll come up, and we're going to run activities such as nature, recycling, the trails, and forestry. As I said, there's more to follow, and it's not for a little while, so I'll be able to report out nearer the time as we firm it up. But it sounds like a great opportunity for us to collaborate with elementary kids and have them come up and see what we do and what they do, and have a bit of learning as well. Good experience for them, good enriching experience. Basketball playoffs. Girl basketball, it seems an eternity since they played, but girl basketball lost in the first round to a strong ex bow team. And boys basketball made it to the state Division III semifinals at the Barry Auditorium. Boys played well. They were actually only down 3 at the half against the now state champions, Winuski. And they, they did us proud, so I'll take my hat off to them. It was a tough challenge, and, you know, nobody, you're not going to say you go in it to lose, but it was a good experience for them, and we were well supported there. Spring sports, they began last Monday, March 20th. And we've got softball, varsity and JV, baseball, varsity and JV, track and field, boys and girls, and girls tennis. We've got about 85 athletes to date out, and as, as normal, probably get a few more as the, as the season really kick into gear. And I just wanted to put on there as well, spring vacation is the week of April 10th to the 14th. We are actually earlier than a lot of our surrounding neighbors. My, my wife works over in order, and I think they're two weeks after us, and I believe some of the other schools are the week after us to go on vacation, like rather than... And that's what I got.
Okay.
Thank you.
Couple of questions. Go ahead, name you first.
Okay, I have two questions, John.
Sure.
First, content aside, I'm interested in how the decision was made to take the high school to the theater because, of course, the trade-off was last time to do that. And I'm also interested in whether there were any actual costs involved, tickets or whatever.
Sure. David, David Stern had reached out through Nick Pelton for the high school to... Again, he reached out to a lot of the, the local schools to go, to see his play. And it, it worked out on the original date that we just couldn't make it. I think it was, the first one was the 22nd that he put out. So, he then offered to rearrange that date to suit us if we were looking at taking the whole school. And, you know, Mr. Pelton, he batted strongly for, for taking the whole school. We, we did talk a little bit about it. I thought it was a good enriching experience for the kids. And, and then I had emailed Andy and got his opinion, see what he thought. And between us all, we decided that it would be a good experience to take the kids. There was no cost involved at all.
That is the best thing.
Other than the bossing down there, yes. Yeah.
Thanks, John. When will the generator be completed? It's been going on like three years here.
Well, it has, yes. But we, the Milton Cat are scheduled to come in. Sue, I, I don't know the exact date. I was still asking you on that today. He didn't know the date. But within the next few weeks, they're planning to come in and do the last part of putting the converters on it to measure the emissions, and then we have to do stack testing. So, I don't have a final date. I will find that out for you as best I can.
So, my, one of my other questions is, when is Sean done?
Sean is finished in two days with his final day. And I don't know, Andy shared that with you or not?
So, we had a, if I can add in there, so there had been a proposal that while we're still in the process solidifying a, a person, and some of the candidates that have been talked to wouldn't even be available for next year kind of thing, is to do a separate contract with Sean to kind of stay on and do some of the, like, opening of the school, making sure boilers are on and stuff of that nature. So, we're in the process of working on a contract right now.
Where he would be part-time?
Kind of, it'd be an independent contractor kind of thing. I mean, he's still, he wouldn't be the head of maintenance, but he would be following through on some of those things until we can secure someone. And then part of that would also, part of that contract would also involve training of a, of a new person as they come on. So, help with that transition.
Yep, that's good. Thank you. One last question. All of everybody else speak. Can you tell me who the coaches are for the spring sports?
Spring sports, yeah, I don't, let me test my memory. We've got Bob Lockaby and Ethan Illingworth. They are baseball, varsity, and JV. Don Lrendo is varsity softball, and Mr. Otis, I forget his last name. We just hired a JV coach. Phil Otis, maybe is his name?
Phil Otis, that's correct.
Is it Bill? Yeah, I know he works for Coda. Okay, Dave Chesley is girls tennis. And right now, we have Kim Lanner and Jamie Danzro for track. And we have a third coach advertised, which we have, no applicants at the moment.
I'm sorry. Tell me again who the track and field are?
Kim Lanner.
Yep.
And Jamie Danzro. And we have a third one advertised, which we have no applicants at the moment.
Okay. Thank you.
I might have to call out my coaching pack and volunteer, which will be fine.
I'm going with Jason first.
Okay. I have several questions. If that's okay. So, pay you back on your question, Molly, on the generator. So, that means that we're not a community shelter if there was an emergency? Not yet?
Not right now.
Okay.
Not right now.
All right. Have we, have we started the reviews for the basketball coaches that came in, the review process?
We started, yes, the reviewed, but are all of our basketball coaches, yes.
When will that be completed?
It's complete now.
Okay.
The kids have done theirs?
Okay, we, I sent them, John, I sent an email about warrants. I'm no longer signing warrants for the high school. Two other people were nominated. But on my last warrant, I had a hard time signing off for, there was a, we, the town and taxpayers paid a, I think it was $1,000 for basketball shirts for the whole team to get basketball shirts, and the coaches got shirts. And I was just wondering why that wasn't picked up by someone else other than a taxpayer. And then there was buses, there was coach buses that were donated. I'm wondering why that wasn't facilitated in, in that way and why, why we had to pay for it, especially when, I, I specifically remember a situation a couple of years ago where the coach had to buy his own basketballs, basketballs. I'm not talking about t-shirts. And then, you know, it's just maybe either we have come a long way or we're dropping the ball, so to speak, on that. I, I don't understand why that was signed off on by so many different levels of management here at the school. I was wondering if you can expand on that?
Yeah, well, the coach, the coach buses were paid for by community members. And the shirts were part of the coach's budget in which he spends, so we didn't go over that. And I believe, are you talking about warm-up shirts or coaches' shirts?
I think there were the t-shirts that said Barry or Bust or something like that.
We often provide a, a warm-up, a warm-up top or a warm-up shirt, and...
That was in the budget?
They were, yeah.
Okay, yes. All right, thanks for answering that. I can't remember the date specifically. It was one of the last meetings. We, I think it was, we had a, a week-long break, and then we had a full workday of school, and then we had, like, Tuesday off as, as a school. And I asked the business office to give for me how many teachers and staff were out at the high school. And there was quite a bit of staff that were out that one day. So, it was almost like a 10, 11, 12-day break or something like that. Have you happened to look into that, a chance?
Look into what you want me to look into?
I, I think just, if I could, I think that was town meeting day, so that...
It was.
We came back from, we had vacation, it came back, and we had Monday, and then town meeting day.
Yeah.
I think that's the time.
Yeah, thank you. Did you have, we just seemed like, we had a lot of, a lot of staff out. And when I did the math, so we signed off, I signed off when I was doing warrants, I think, like $18,000 for the first half of the year that substitutes were out, or I'm sorry, not substitutes, teachers were out. And at average, to be about, the teachers, the teachers, full-time teachers were averaging about four days of, of work a week based on how many people were out. And so, it had me thinking of, you know, do we have a problem, you know? And then I asked the business office to provide me what the documentation was for substitutes. And, you know, they were very candid and said that they probably could do a better job of not making sure that the documentation was done, but gathering it all and having it timely. And my concern is, our substitutes are very young, teaching our staff. We have professionals that are only averaging four days of work, so who's teaching our kids? And what are we doing about it? Because, again, we had one workday. We had a whole week off, one workday, then another day off, and then when you check the attendance, there was like six or seven staff that were not in the building. So, I'm just wondering...
Well, I, all I can answer to that is, we give staff out by contract, so many sick days. When someone is sick, I don't think we can challenge what they're saying, you know? I can't, I can't go in and ask them, okay, why were you off? I could ask them why they're off yesterday, but, or why they were off at that time. But I, I, I guess I'm not quite understanding what...
I think, I think we have an excessive, you know, I think, I think for me, being the professionals that they are, I think it's really important to make sure they're in the building, teaching the kids. No matter how many days are guaranteed off or, or whatever, I'm, I'm guaranteed so many days off a year also. Doesn't mean I pay them, because my role is to provide great service. So, their role is also to provide great service, but to our students. So, it just looked weird that there was one workday, and there were several teachers out. And again, we, they're averaging for the first half of the year, four days in the building, four days a week. That's the whole staff. That's just the math of it, and that was verified by Jim as well. So, I think it's something we need to look at. How do we improve it? You know, what can we do about it? So, I'd appreciate if you could, you know, check that for next.
I'll be happy to look into it before class.
Thank you. I have one last thing, Molly, if that's okay. You have a, a status on performance reviews for staff. We have contracts by April 15th that we have to, you know, it's an important date, so we need to know, like, I don't know what the process is. We didn't get any last year. I'm just wondering if it's, you know, who's meeting standards, who's above standard, and who's on a plan? Or I don't know how, how it works, but I'm, you know, maybe for next...
That would be something the superintendent and I would, if it was a concern, that we would discuss and then bring it forward to the board.
So, you think that'll be by the April 10th meeting?
Sure.
You think, okay. Thank you. Thanks, Molly.
Priscilla, I see your hand. I'm going to go June first. She's had her hand up.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. How many generators do we have? Two. And how much are the monitors that we're going to need to get them?
I don't have that exact answer for you, but I can find that out.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, they're not up and running as of...
The generators are up and running, and they can be used for emergency. Just by legalities, they can't be used for prime, for demand response.
So, are they automatic, or do you have to click this way?
I told Sean this morning, when the power goes out, they should click on.
They come on?
Yep.
Okay.
And that's the only time legally, as far as I know, from our person who does all our legal stuff, he said that we can't use it for prime power until we get the, the converters on them and measure the emissions. But for emergencies, we have them working. And Sean just finished getting, now that they're working, he got trained on the new circuitry and whatnot, so.
I have one more. I was very saddened to hear that our beloved athletic trainer, who had gone years without, we finally got her, and she was amazing. And I was told at a Purple Pride basketball event that she was done, and I was kind of saddened that we didn't have a heads-up as a board, and maybe we could have given her some kind of incentive to stay. The kids loved her. As far as I know, the staff loved her, and she was busier than a one-armed paper hanger. Her, and she, you know, she helped the kids with other injuries, and I was...
Totally agree.
I was...
The week, the week before she gave her final letter, when she had expressed that she may be doing this, I, I know I had a conversation, I know, you know, a conversation, other coaches have spoke to her as well. She had not made up her final mind until the, literally that week that she put in her notice. She got, she worked in a school in New York that she loved, and that was her favorite job. And they were just, they didn't do her well, which is why she moved on to New Jersey, and then she came to us. And then they came back with a huge offer, in her, in her words, that she couldn't turn down. But it wasn't just the money, because we had, we had upped her salary as well, based on the, on the last board meeting we were talking about, you know, raising her pay. And she just said it was a tough decision, but that was her dream job. I said, well, you know...
So, are we hiring? Do we have an ad out for...
It's out to be advertised, and I know the, the, she had a, a mentor. She was a mentor to Hannah, who worked with her, who lives in Dumiston, and is finishing up her athletic trainer stuff in May. So, she, she may apply, but when it goes out there, yeah, we're, we want to...
So, it's been written up, but it hasn't been advertised yet?
I don't know.
Okay.
Maybe there's...
All right.
As close a person as the one we have, but, yeah, Rebecca was the name. She was great.
Yes, she was. Thank you.
Darcy, and then Priscilla.
So, to piggyback on the athletic trainer, do families know? Because I talked to my daughter this morning and referred her to go see her, and she said she's gone.
I don't remember.
I was a bit surprised, as maybe throw that out to the spring sport families.
That's a good point.
And was Ultimate Frisbee offered as a spring sport this year?
It was spoken about and offered, but it was not over the, the last few years, as it's diminished. I don't believe that we had many that were wanting to play. But again, at any time, we can, if, if you know...
Was there a signup list?
Was a signup, yeah.
There was, and there wasn't enough to have a team.
Signups were out, and it just, yeah, I mean, we've had it over the last three years. So, but it, it just, the kids moved on, and it diminished to the point where, again, we, we just didn't have enough for a team, you know? I mean, we started it when we, three years ago, we did scrimmages, and then we played for two years in the league. And then the kids all graduated and moved on, so it was, it's tough, but if it's, if there's a need, we'll do it.
All right, thank you.
Priscilla, you're next.
Okay, I wanted to just say that I looked at the same numbers on, on absentees as Jason did. And since I'm getting that, there are at least, there are over 20 teachers that are in attendance, at least on those averages, at least five days, all the five days a week. So, I guess if he's going to say that Jim is supporting what he's saying, I guess I would like Jim to evaluate that and come back and, and look at that, because I'm getting an average, based on the numbers Jason gave us, that there's about eight absences in a week. And with that number of teachers that we have and support staff and all of that, like I said, it would be over 20 of them here, all five days. So, if we could have an update from that standpoint also, that would be helpful. Thanks.
Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Brody? I have one more, but I didn't want to butt in front of anybody. And tech teacher. So, you know, as we all know, that's a position that probably Molly is pretty passionate about. And I understand that our teacher has gone ill and hasn't been in the school for quite some time. And I guess I kind of feel like some of these other people, you know, I heard that on the street. I didn't hear it here. And I'm wondering what we're doing, where those kiddos are, what are we doing to make sure that they're getting that time in the shop that probably they need to succeed?
Right now, we, the classes were smaller, so the council and office reconstituted the students. We did let students and I believe families know, and I'll have to, I'll have to check on that memo. But that, again, being considerate of the privacy of Mr. Bennett's family, we decided that as he was talking about retiring this year, or going to retire this year, which I don't think we've got a final letter in yet, but we can go that way, that we didn't open the shop this year, this semester, second semester.
So...
So, rather than put, because you can't put anybody in with just a sub, we didn't get any long-term sub applications when the semester started, and then we're going to advertise for on for next year.
So, I didn't have this information on the tip of my tongue until I got sent a email. I didn't have this information on the tip of my tongue until I got sent a email today asking me to write something for my picture and. For being on a school board and how long have I been doing this? And why do I do it? I've been doing this for fourteen years and I do it because of the kids. And. Because of who I am, I'm really passionate about making sure that those kids that need to do hands-on stuff. Can do it and so probably, you know, enrollment wasn't a lot. But um, we do a lot for a lot of programs in the school. And we've kind of let that little room down there.
Well, we did.
And I just, I'm really, I just. I I understand the privacy of Mr. Bennett. I'm not looking for you to tell me anything about Mr. Bennett. What I wanna know is is that. The kid that can't sit still in this library be, and that's what whoever's in charge here is telling them to do. And needs to be doing something with their hands, can't do it right now in the school. And so. Um, I've kept that in for a long time, but I it is so important to me. Whether it's, whether they're pulling in a snowmobile and somebody's teaching them how to fix a cabaret on it or they're building a birdhouse. I don't care what they're doing, as long as they're doing something that helps. We have a lot of small-town kids that aren't gonna go to college. And they need that step to get them into the tech center. They just, they don't have dads like I did. They're not gonna get taught how to do things without cutting their fingers off. I still got all mine. And it's, it's really important to me. And I'm I'm really disappointed to hear. I was hoping you were gonna tell me you had slid somebody, some retired contractor in. And he was doing the best he could. He didn't have a teacher's degree, but who cared? He was doing great things with the kids. And I understand his laws, but. There, I said my two cents without even being too bad. It's very important to me.
I agree, I agree.
I'm disappointed to hear that those kids don't have anything this year. I'm done. Anyone else?
Go ahead. Do we ask questions of John about the roster when it comes time for the roster?
Yep, that'll be on the agenda here.
Okay.
So Superintendent. Are you next? I lost my agenda. Committees, uh Buildings and Grounds update. Uh, Jason was there. We had a great meeting. Um, last week, the architect was here, we had, they, he. She had the plans all out on on things to improve the school. Um, super excited about seeing that we're doing anything, cause we've, we talk about stuff all the time around here. We don't do much and. And I, the plans are. Just great. Um, just to see a set of plans and know that we've taken at least that step and that we're gonna start working on the next step is. Is huge. Um, the school, uh WNSU, Andy has hired a. Project manager who's gonna help us get some of these things done. Which I don't know if everybody knew that, but I thought it was important to just make sh- just mention that, so everybody did know that, because it's not gonna be. On the principals or on Andy, once that project is is out there and given to Steve, just, you know. He's gonna help us write the specs and he's gonna do everything, right?
Yeah, I can give a little update on that. So I I've been meeting weekly with Steve. Um, since coming back from vacation and then met with him. Last week and we kind of went through all the different projects and plans. He he took a real hard look at the. At the engineering plans for the HVAC system here. Um, you know, we we basically got a. Got a Ferrari drawn up for this place, but you know, um, and so, um, it's it's a lot of, there's a lot in it. Um, he is projecting that this project may come out over four million dollars at this point. Um, and we had a um. We're we're trying to figure out how to how to move fast, because you gotta preorder these things way in advance. Uh, we had a meeting with the state and got a lot of information um on on basically directions to go. Um, so he um is going, um, he's starting. We have to start with a pre-qualification for construction managers. Um, so that's the thing we have to do is, so he's working, he started that today. Um, and then. We're also looking to bundle some of our other projects, because that might get some other people in. Um, and that includes the roof project and and whatnot. Um, but so. We have to get the pre-qualification for construction managers. This is all like AOE federal stuff. That's the problem. And then. Uh, we'd be looking to hand um get a construction management company in that would handle. Basically, the um, the whole project working with Steve, uh Steve Horton, the gentleman, um, so everyone knows who that is. Um, and so, um. You know, he he understands and it's his priority that the HVAC system is our number one piece. Um, we talked with the state about um potentially. And we're not ready yet to come back with 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 a full like ask of the board, but. Uh, we've got like one point three, one point five in in capital reserves. Um, uh, do we bundle some master funds and take that capital reserve funds to do the HVAC system? Um, because if we get to a point where Esther's gonna run out and the and the project isn't done. There there is a liquidation period, but you can't count on that liquidation period. And so. Um. It it may in the, you know, the state's not gonna advise us, but it may be prudent to um bundle those funds that we have that money. If we need to go beyond September twenty twenty-four, so. Um, so that's what he's working on and part of it is getting those bids in and and whatnot. Um. You know, we we even looked at like, could we go with like a a group that would come in, do the whole thing, soup to nuts, it's. Um, the state says that won't happen. We have to go out this way. So he's working on that. The other piece is the science wing. Um, we we, I basically said that's a a main priority, something we need to move on and get going. Uh, he understands that, so he's uh working uh directly with um. NBF, who's the architect who who did that feasibility study. Um, he indicated. I'm gonna float this here. He indicated that it may actually be cheaper to put walls. As opposed to using movable partitions. And that it would not be a huge cost. To move a couple sprinkles and to, and with the HVAC system going in and everything, it's, we gotta do some moving anyway, because it's a science area. That there would not be a huge. Lift uh as far as money. And so he was actually saying that, like, the costs. Offset of buying partitions versus moving some sprinkles. Might be beneficial. So um, it was just a conversation we had, but he wants to talk with the architects some more about that. But, um, yeah, get getting some things there, just so the folks know kind of where it is. He he is recommending. Um. The the driveway and everything, we pushed off to the summer of twenty twenty-four at this point. So he was. Listing up, so we had our feasibility kind of first meeting um last week, uh, kind of look at SU to kind of do strategic planning. And he's already strategically planning out like the high school, when we should be looking to do some of these things. So uh two kind of parallel, so.
David.
Okay, um. It was at the um. Building and grounds committee meeting. I think there were four or five of us there, my recollection. And um, my hearing, uh, Andy was that, in fact, the architect was recommending masonry. For the science area. Um, and the explanation was that it was sort of a code issue. As far as partitions go, and I'm speaking strictly from my own bias here. But the major advantage of partitions is that you can reconfigure your school. Without necessarily having to reconfigure your HVAC in this as. Uh, fads and trends and uh teaching uh change and, you know, what do we want, our fourth or fifth. Statewide assessment plan, not quite four or five years, but maybe ten. We know that. Um, wh- what's best practice is constantly changing and the ability to reconfigure. You know, the majority of our academic areas by uh moving a, you know, movable partition. I think has a great deal of value, but as far as um, the uh science wing went, yeah, the architect said. You have to have the mason reconstruction. That's that's my recollection. So.
And that was for the lab prep areas?
Yes.
And and um, and again, I only, that's why I paused a little bit by floating that out there, cause I I understand that that is. Um, for for Bellows Falls, a very radical. Thing to talk about walls, um, because we we've had an open concept in for fifty years. And so, I, so I'm just, like. We need to, if we even went down that road, we're gonna be at the table here.
It's been a huge discussion, this table over the years about walls, Andy. This is not new news.
No, no, I know that, so I just floated that out there, so.
Jason, you're next.
Um. Molly, um, this Thursday, we have another Buildings and Grounds uh meeting, I believe. Um, do you think, Andy, if you think we could have something available for the tent that we can vote on to get the ball rolling? As far as spending the money, um, you know, do, can you have some sort of plan together? Will somebody have a plan together to? As soon as we do it, as soon as we vote on, I mean, you know how the meetings go. Yeah, yeah. So so for the HVAC system, we're we're maybe two months out before we can, cause we have to go out, cause there's just. Because of the size of the project and the dollars involved, you've got to go through these special federal bid processes. And so we, my understanding is we're minimum of a month out before we'd have a solid bid back, maybe two months. And um, to come to you all and say, can you. Agree to expend funds that, oh, I don't know how much it's gonna be yet.
Yeah.
I I don't think that would be right. Um, but um, we may. I I'm meeting with the the coordinators tomorrow to kind of go over that plan that we went over and have them take a look at it and the ideas to come back with the staff. Yeah, that that's what I'm really talking about, that that part of it. Did we get, did we get, um, I think we were supposed to, uh. Uh, faculty meeting or something after the last meeting and they're supposed to, their recommendations? We're gonna be with the coordinators.
Yeah.
Who are the department heads.
Yeah.
Um, tomorrow and kind of go over those plans and and then take that to the faculty, which would be the following week. Uh, and and just kind of get some of those ideas, but as I get those ideas, I'm gonna give them right back to our architect.
Okay.
So she can start making the adjustments as we go. And last question, Molly, if we don't do the parking lot until next year, will that money still be there? It's gonna be earmarked.
Town's all approved.
So if it, if this thing keeps dragging on until I'm sixty, the money will still be there.
We won't be enough money there, but yes.
Okay, low gain interest, right? Put it in the CDR open or something, maybe the banks will still be open then. Okay, thank you, Molly.
June, um, I have a couple of different things. I, for one, would vote for walls for the science area anyways. As far as fire safety and chemical safety. If you have walls, it's easier to contain. Um, so I think we should think of that when. I don't know about walls for the rest of the area, but I would definitely. Um, my personal vote is for walls for the science department, at least the chemical lab, bio lab. Um, and now I'm gonna channel my inner David. Um, now, um, did the school? Didn't this this school get the PCB?
Oh, thank you for bringing that up. Yes, thank you.
Results?
May I speak on that? We did, we had zero results, so we had testing done. Uh, we were told it'd be about about two weeks. It's been about four. Um, and um. So we're still even waiting on Westminster, which was done.
Before us.
Long time ago. Um, and then, um. Oh, I'm gonna get the act wrong and I can't pull up my email, so I apologize. Um, but, um. There is, um, they're green lighting and fast-tracking uh some legislation. That actually may put a halt to PCB testing. And bundle, I knew I was gonna get that out, yeah. And bundle it with some uh building, um, like. Things that possibly come back, no, possibly come back with, you know, some building aid and stuff like that, so. Um, you know, uh, like Woodstock uh Middle High School. Uh, they're looking at a sixty-five million dollar rebuild. Um, Superintendent is quoted as saying, you know, we're one toilet flush away from closing the school. Um, and um, there's an article that I was going, I I can pre-share it with you all. I was gonna share out. Um, in my superintendent's report that really dives into a lot of this and what other schools have had to go through, but it talks about that legislation. So they are. Um, looking at potentially, um. Yeah, uh, maybe putting it, what it would be, put it in the committee or or just kind of pushing it off to the side, which is.
But it's been done, so we should get the results. I mean.
Yeah, they're still moving, in fact, the the company that came and did the testing.
Airport syrup up there?
Has contacted us about still moving forward with other schools. So I think their contract is going through. When we, when will we get those results? I don't know. I will query him and and try to have an answer for you on the next um meeting. And the other piece, just I'm gonna preempt this whole thing, is radon. We have to do radon testing. And that's a cost that is not being covered by the state. We have to do our own radon testing. But they just pushed that out. It was supposed to be done by twenty, June of twenty twenty-three. They just pushed that out to June twenty twenty-five. So we're now looking.
Busy passing these stupid things that the schools don't matter, so they pushing us out.
And yeah, so once, once we do the radon testing, we then have to notify staff and and the community of the results, so.
So I committed to the Tuesday meeting. I was gonna just show up and see how the staff, what the staff was looking for. I have a tendency to overbook myself and I'm in Rutland tomorrow afternoon, so. If, you know, if somebody could come and just provide the two thirty.
Uh, yeah, we could do it, do it, run us about it. Or two forty-five or two, two fifteen, maybe, two forty-five.
Is that okay to do?
Yeah, so I had, I would just wanted to, you know, have a school board. You know, member there just to, you know, figure out the, what the staff was looking for and how it went over and. You know, if you didn't mind, just, you know, giving us some feedback on. How it felt that, you know, it was just. I just thought, you know, if they saw some of us here, they might realize that we really are serious about doing some of these things. David, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I I want to respond to June on this and I'm gonna try not to stray too far off topic. But it's, it's been a practice for quite a long time with the Vermont Legislature to come up with big ideas. And then when they start to look at what those big ideas cost, they have a tendency to try to kick it down the road to the next legislature. You know, do the math, two thousand twenty-five legislature. And unfortunately, uh, we don't talk statewide politics at this table, but there's an awful lot. That goes on statewide. It does impact us. We're almost certainly gonna be picking up a piece of the action. Uh, through tax effort for the replacement of early from high school manuals, a hundred thirty million dollar. Project, I think, I'm not certain on that, but the the point being that, um. What should be a simple matter, which is to, now that they've taken their samples, tell us whether we have a PCB problem or not. Um, probably has a great deal to do, June, with politics and very little to do with science.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
So, a couple of other questions. We're not locked into anyone right now as far as who is going to. Work on our HVAC.
Correct.
That's good, because it sounded like Steve might have some. Contacts.
Well, yeah, and I think, I think that that was one of the the questions we had for the state was, could we. Work with someone on a on a project management. Per se, which is you hire someone and they kind of do the whole thing, soup to nuts. Um, that is frowned upon, if not allowed, um, through the state, um, AOE. Um, and, um, but I think he does have quite a few contacts that he will be, um. Um, inviting to be, um.
So one of the other things, I got it, David. One of the other things that I'm just gonna throw out there, because. Um, I think a a lot of good people graduate from Farm Mountain High School and they have a straight hallway. And they have doors and they have classrooms. And I don't get out of my two little towns very often, but my point is, I don't think we have to have. Revolving walls to make our kids successful. And I've done a lot of uh reading since. To make our kids successful. And I've done a lot of uh reading since we met with that architect. Because I've done a lot of jobs like this, but never with walls that moved. And the price comparison is absolutely ridiculous when you look at what are. And it, it doesn't matter whether you look at, I mean, you can buy some really expensive wall systems. But any wall system is very expensive compared to, you know, when a school like this, you know, they would just use metal. You know, just a metal track and metal studs and and wallboarded up. And, you know, you could soundboard some rooms if you needed to. You can put in, you know, she talked about buying these panels where you could have a whiteboard on one wall. You could do that same thing when you're building your wall. You could have a, a pushpin board on one section of the wall if you wanted to. It's all very, very easily done. And I I think you will be shocked at the difference in pricing. To to have, you know, if, especially this, this line of classrooms down through here. Now, I get that there's places that maybe, you know, there's. A lot of people that have lived here in a school for so long that they're just used to being able to move these copies around. But I don't think we have to be successful.
Yeah, one, one of the things that Steve and I, and I agree with Steve on this, um, very much is, is the safety issue. I mean, you know, when this school was built, um, we weren't dealing with, you know, um. Bad people coming into buildings and doing bad things to our students and um. And today, um, you know, I think there was just one today, to be very honest with you. Um, and and so, um, when we, we think about it, uh, you know, a partition wall. And I understand the flexibility piece, that the partition wall does not create any. Um, added security feature. That's, you know, when I, when I think about that, that's. Still one piece that plays in my mind of, of how do we keep kids safe and and um. And so it's not necessarily only about cost savings also, it's also, to me, it's like, how do we keep kids safe? Uh, and.
David.
Very clear statement, Andy. I'm open to persuasion.
Um, I'm just gonna check in with Priscilla. We've talked a lot here, Priscilla, have you got any comments?
Um, Molly, I'm okay.
I think we've beat that up pretty good. Anybody else before we move on? All right, let's move on to seven A principal search.
Um, yeah, so we're, we're, we we solicited um and asked for people for, um. You know, who are interested in being on the committee. Uh, we have. A couple of staff from, uh, few staff from the building, uh, some central office staff, a couple of, um, board members. And some committee members who, um, are interested. My, um, goal was to, um. Find out when that, those folks could get together and and start scheduling some meetings and start moving on that direction. Um, we are on, we have a community night on Wednesday for the middle school principal, so that's, that's, you know. Um, so we're trying to balance out those two pieces.
Yeah, it'd be good to have that one done first.
Are there any students on yet?
Uh, we, we hadn't gotten any, um, we put it out to the community asking, uh, that'll be my next thing, like. Like, I think it's really important to ask students on, on a committee like that. And I wanna look at stakeholders, uh, one and the other one. We don't have any real support staff on there. Um, and and I think so having, having that. But thank you for that reminder, because that's.
Any other questions, Randy, before we move on? Okay, so Andy, I'm gonna put you right back on the spot again. Any update on the therapy guy?
Yeah, so we've, uh, put together a, a protocol. Um, we were having it wordsmithed and looked at, because it's, I won the pink shirts. I don't have, I got all my P's crossed and I dotted. Um, my intention was to put that out with my superintendent's report at the SU, just because it's gonna impact all of our buildings. Um, and so, uh, we, we should have something out, um, that, it's not just about dogs, it's, it's, it's therapy animals. So we, we really tried to, um, you know, put it in that way. Um, because there are animals, other animals that could be, um, therapy animals. You know, not an alligator or a lizard.
No snake.
No snake, but, um, the, the majority of them are dogs and and, and we wanted to, um, roll it all out at once. Um, and and put it in there. And I, I think that, um, you know, it puts in place some procedures so that. Everyone is on the know of what's happening. There's, there's notifications to families. There's, you know, so we tried to take into account. The concerns that we heard from folks, but at the same time be able to provide an opportunity to, um. You know, if there is someone who has dogs that are trained in that, um, ability. They can provide some comfort for, for students. And there's a lot of research to, to support that. So we just wanted to find that nice balance, so.
June, I'm not sure if you can answer this or not, but when I initially brought up the question, I only knew of one dog. Um, and there was a question about whether or not that. Dog was actually trained as a therapy dog. Um. And. I don't know if you can answer that.
So in, in the research and putting this together, the organization that. One of the two dogs that were in our building. Um, would not suffice, uh, appropriate training, uh, whereas the other one would. Um, and so.
Through double training, so, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, so I know that, um, I, I believe a, a staff member spoke to the board at one time about, um, that. Uh, that animal would meet our criteria, whereas the other animal wouldn't.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, let's move on to, uh, new business approval of teacher roster. So this brought up a lot of questions today when this came out. Um, so I'm gonna start. We have just barely received this and, and we need to vote on it, we need approval of this. Um, my recommendation is that we, um, ask all of our questions. And Andy will get back to us on the tenth of April is our next meeting. And then we will approve a teacher roster. But right now, I think that a lot of the school board members have questions and Jason, I'm gonna start with you.
I just, uh, again, I would like to see reviews, uh, or some, or policy and procedures. We're supposed to see, uh, not necessarily the review, but where teachers are and reviews. And whether they're meeting, whether they're, uh, underperforming. Um, we have not ever seen that and we, and we have until the fifteenth. So I would like to, uh, see that before I approve any roster.
I would like to see class sizes.
That as well.
June?
Um, okay, so has anyone talked to, um. Two of these teachers who are on leave?
Yes, I, my office has spoken with all of the teachers. There are three teachers right now that are currently on this list. That are not in the building.
Yeah.
I'll say it that way.
Okay.
Um, my office is spoken with all three of those, um, members. Um, one of them indicated their intent to retire, so we asked for a formal letter. I do have that in an email, though.
Okay.
Another indicated that, um, due to a conflict, they will not be able to return. Um, and then another indicated that they are looking to return.
Okay.
That's about as clear as much to your answer. I honestly just don't know if I can use.
Right, right. Yeah, no, that's all right, that's fine. That's fine. Um, and, um, the, the choral director. Is only point six, seven percent. Does she get any? Uh, pay for the drama performances that she, so does that bring her up to a full time or not? Not quite full time.
But there, there are stipended positions in the bargaining agreement for different. Um, you know, for like the plays, just like any other, it's considered an extracurricular activity.
Okay. Um, and when will? The, um, guidance have the master schedule done so that we can know class sizes? So it won't be before we have to ratify these?
No, but I've asked guidance for, um, you know, um, and it, it will not probably be before you ratify this, but. You should know, um, you know, students and course requests, and then course request should give you some indication of where they are. So, um, I can check with them for, um, and and see where they are. Like, even if it's, we don't have every class done, because I think they have, they meet with kids individually, and so they have a process they go through. But we should have freshmen done, because freshmen have already been in, and so we can start making some decisions there.
And I have one more. Um, David asked John to look into. AP dual enrollment offerings, um, versus AP off, AP offerings. Versus the dual enrollment. And John was gonna get back to us, maybe he got back to David?
No, I, I haven't, but I. I guess I, I needed more clarity on what you want to know for the difference, because there is a, if you, there is a big difference. I believe anyway, in dual enrollment.
The, the minutes say AP and dual enrollment basically serve the same purposes to get students college credits. Dual enrollment is way cheaper than AP. We have two dual enrollment offerings. We have five AP offerings. My question is, what through AP are not available through dual enrollment? And it says John will find out.
We have two English classes that are dual enrollment and we have. Six or seven in total other classes that are AP, the whole system of. Whether they, they get college credit or whether colleges accept it is very, um. What I'm looking for. No, it, it's not consistent. You know, you can say that in a dual enrollment through CCV, they'll get CCV credit. But not all, not all colleges accept CCV credit, so then it becomes dependent on what college the kids go to. Um, and I'll use my own daughter as an example for the AP. Abby went to UVM and the two of our classes of AP. Got her nine college credits up there to, to my pleasant surprise. But, um, it depends on the school, it depends on what courses they've taken, where they've taken. So again, that, I can, I can do my best to navigate that, but it's a, it's a, it's a my rat of.
Yeah, I was just concerned, because when you gave us the list of classes and how many kids in each class. There were several AP classes that had two or three kids in them. And that kind of concerned me.
When, when was that?
Um, a few months ago, you gave us.
Latest report.
Okay, um, a- a- and it, that kind of concerned me, that there was a class for just, you know, two kids.
This year, math is two. Again, we'll, we'll have to check with the councils, but again, I, next year it's two, like nine or tens. Or calculus, um. AP comparative government is four and every other one is further than that or should be above that.
Go ahead. Priscilla, I see your hand and you'll be next. Just letting Andy finish.
I, I just wanted to add in, just in clarification on dual enrollment AP, so, um. When, when a student takes AP classes and they, they take the test, a lot of times we. Believe that if a student gets a three or better, that a college is gonna accept that credit. Not necessarily. Every college gets to make a decision on AP courses. Some won't accept threes, some won't even accept fours. And so it really depends on the college. Um, and, and so, um, that, that is out there, but, um, many colleges accept fours and fives, but, uh. And then with dual enrollment, you, you have varying dual enrollment type programs. You can have one where we're teaching the course. And the students were coupling with a college, and so that teacher is certified by the college to teach a college level course. So there's that type. There's also the ability of students to take a course at a college. Which would then count, we can count as credit, but then this college, that would be college transcript. Um, and that can be done through, uh, you know, a, a program that you're actively pursuing or can be done through independent study. So there, there's, there's some, there are ways. There's also running start, which is usually through the career center. Um, where kids can get college credit as well, so.
And I, I put out last year that list. There is a, there is a list, and I'm, I'm gonna look it back up for you and I'll put it out to all board members. There was a list that actually went through the colleges that accept a three, the colleges accept a four and a five, so I'll, I'll find that. That back out and that'll be good. You know, then something can, you can measure it off and it tells you how many and, and what, I mean, what each one is, so. Again, for a student going to a particular college, you know, maybe it's, it's all that mapped out, then that may help with the decision if we're gonna do an AP course as well, you know, so.
I'm gonna just grab Priscilla first and I'll get you my, Priscilla, go ahead.
Uh, yes, our policy that we have is that, um, an AP class is supposed to have at least five in it. And an honors class is supposed to have ten in it. Um, I think we should start looking at and considering. Whether a course could be given every other year, because that way, um, you would have a larger enrollment for that. Particularly the year in that course, if you, if you did that. The reason for those numbers are, are not just, um, because of the staffing needed and the other thing. It's also for the students. If the student doesn't have enough other students in their class to have a really healthy discussion. Then the, the quality of the class is not nearly as good, especially at the high school level. Where discussions are important in classes. So if we can just start thinking about maybe every other year on some of those classes. It will up our enrollment for those particular ones and still offer all of the variety of classes that we give. Thanks.
Thank you. That's good advice. Mike, you're next, and then Jason.
Um, new guys, so I can ask the dumb questions, but we just voted a budget in. I would think, I would have thought that a roster would have been established to create the budget. This kind of seems backwards to me.
So it was, but as I look at this, we had this many discussions about the Smith Math teacher that's still on here. Then everything that I remember getting told was we could have been away for a while. So I think we're trying to knuckle this down a little bit.
Time wise, it's just the pace of the year, though, that the roster's voted on after the budget is approved.
We, we start, we start our budget in August. You know, so, so we, we start really, really early. Uh, one of the things, uh, we're working with, with a group of new students, they well. Um, and, um, they are good, I can kind of come and help with looking at our overall schedule. And how we're utilizing our FTE, right? Um, and, and utilizing them also in terms of supporting students at all levels. So how are we, you know, if we don't need five math teachers, right? We're not saying. Let's, let's roll it matter right now, but how are we utilizing them and then broadcasting in the future? Okay, if we, if we know, if, if a teacher retired, maybe we're not gonna replace that teacher in the future. So to give us a roadmap on the, for, but, um.
What's the timing on that becoming the process?
It, it's, uh, we're gaining them now. Uh, we're gonna do a little bit of work this year, but a lot of it for next year. Um, you know, the other thing is, you know, needs change. And so the high school, if we're seeing we don't need that fifth math teacher, but we need, we need something to do. We, we need a horticulture teacher. Coming back to the board and shifting that FTE out of math and maybe over into a science kind of thing. Um, would, would be an appropriate music.
Would that happen before the budget starts or after the budget?
Like I'm talking about, right, right now. So, so as we've gone through and we, we do all the classes and we find out, wow, we, we're a little. Heavy here and we haven't filled that position, so. So we don't want to fill that position, but we want to maybe replace it with this because there's a greater need. So that would be an eye kind of thing at the bottom, looking at, keeping the bottom line where it is, but not adjusting people along. Does that make sense?
Kind of, it still seems backwards to me.
I, I'm not disagreeing.
Budget based upon all the things you talked about. And then, you know, further away. The roster would be kind of, uh, maybe making sure that you have the right people in the right seats. The seats are established based upon who the social issues that do individuals, maybe that's a follow.
I think that's basically what we, is, you know, John came to us with, this is what I think I'm going to need for next year. You know, not knowing for sure what, what is student population going to look like. And now we should have a much better idea because we're almost done this year and, you know, we're going to know what kids are coming out from, what we need to learn. So now what are we doing?
It didn't get all that asked.
Yeah, I mean, we do analyze it, not just, uh, okay.
Um, Jason and then Dave.
So, hey, well, I just want to make sure and I want to make sure every board member, um, I'm hearing my frustration. We have, over the last few years, our rankings have gone down statewide, nationwide. We haven't been able to prove any quantifiable results of AP. The percentages are super low. And you asked just a few minutes ago, you said you wanted to talk about a class time. And then June followed up with, um, you know, asking Andy, this guidance is going to have the calendar ready. And the answer was no, not before the 15th. So I'm, I'm ready to vote now. I mean, the, the answer is always the answer, we can just vote yes. I'm not doing that this year. So if, if guidance's job is to have the calendar to us so we can vote on it, if that's, that's what I'm hearing, correct me if I'm wrong, then they gotta have it done. No ifs, ands or buts, because we have a drop dead date to offer contract to people, I believe. And if I'm wrong, just say I'm wrong and I'll just shut up. But every year it's been the same thing. And I've asked, Mr. Stack, I asked that question my first board meeting, I was like, this is backwards to me, we're giving you a bunch of money and yet, you know, it's like, okay, add on whoever you want, it's backwards. I mean, so I, I, I don't want to vote yes on a contract until it's right. And following politeness procedure. So, thank you.
If, if I may just respond real quick, so in a school, it, it, I wish it were easy, like it's backwards because of how we do budget. But we also don't know, we have an idea of where students are in, in, as far as passing courses, but you don't know yet, the students are still in the process. So if you, you start a process of getting kids to, um, request courses so you can project forward and you do that in the spring and you, and you start that, um, could we accelerate that? I, I think we could and I think that's why we're looking to bring new solutions in, because I think we can accelerate that so we can get the, those preliminary numbers sooner, so we can make some better choices. Um, but we, we don't necessarily always know the finalized schedule, like we would love to be able, like it's always a, a goal of school to be able to hand out the schedule to kids as they walk out the door so they know what classes they have next year. And if you don't do that, then you got parents screaming, why haven't you told me what classes they have?
And who are the teachers there?
Right, right, and I, and I can be honest with you, I can remember going to the minister's bureau on the very last day of school with teachers at another school, I had to go to a teacher to ask him to teach a class because all of a sudden my number's young and I needed to open another section of the class. So it's not as clear to say we need X number of teachers. Now, some schools take the, the method of saying, well, we have, these are our teachers we have next year. So we're going to start right there as opposed to looking at what are the needs of the students. And, and, and that's the switch I think we need to make here, which is what are not, not, and that's not to say we need to get rid of teachers, right? It's just, just because teacher A has always taught these courses, is that the courses they need to teach? Or do we need to adjust courses because the students need to adjust their, how they need?
I would just like to say, not once did I say get rid of teachers.
Nope.
And anyway, I did not say get rid of teachers. I said I would like performance reviews so we can improve our results.
Yep.
So if you, if, if I'm an employee and I don't know if, if I'm doing good or bad, if I've never gotten a review, how do I know? How do I, how, how can I improve if I don't know? That's all, I'm not saying get rid of anybody, I'm saying I want to improve the results and follow policy and procedure. Okay.
You?
Andy, do you have, um, do you know if by our next meeting, um, you will have letters from these people that you mentioned, there were three of them, um, letters from them so that we have an updated roster, you know, so instruction such as carbon has an open position?
I, I have informal.
Okay, but, but you will, okay. So this will be updated.
Right.
Okay. David?
Thanks, Ma. Okay, um, June, uh, raised the question, uh, raised, but wasn't exactly answered. So I will state it one more time and I'm not looking for an answer. And that is, um, what courses are we offering in AP that are not available to people? Question, right? And I understand there is a great deal of nuance involved in AP. Because as you pointed out, some schools will take the credits, some schools won't take the credits and some places, the more prestigious schools really want to see AP instead of dual enrollment. I get all that. I do think that the vast majority of kids come out of the S and R chest. If they go on a college path, probably aren't necessarily looking to get into the prestige school. And I think that's part of the balance now we're talking about when we, uh, do a cost benefit analysis of AP versus dual enrollment. It's not an open check, I realize, it's a, it's a, it's a nuanced situation. And I want, wanted to make that point, that it's not simply, um, a question of whether you can provide, uh, equivalent instruction dual enrollment, uh, more cheaply than AP, but rather, you know, what the, what the trade offs are in terms of what, um, kids will be able to take with them on a college path. My naive assumption that most kids would be fine if they do enrollment credit. But I understand what high flyers might possibly want to have those AP, I want to say one more thing. There's not a lot of people at the table here who have the, I think the, the long range memory. Um, back around 2015, this school made AP honorable. And we were one of, I think it was 1200 or 1500 schools in the US that did it. That's a pretty big deal. But what was a bigger deal is we made it to next year as well. And in order to make it two years in a row, you had to both increase the size of your cohort, people enrolled in AP and you had to improve your test scores. And that winnowed the field considerably down to, I think it was maybe 100 or 150 schools in the US that did it, and this is one of them. And I'm simply raising this point because, um, it hasn't helped us all. One, one of my, uh, one of my favorite sayings is set the bar low enough and people will flip over it. And I make the comparison because when we set the bar really high, we found out a lot of students in the school were able to get over it. This is where I have agreement with Jason Hird. We've been on post in this school for a while now and we need to take some steps to, you know, realize the full potential of, you know, a student, our staff and, um, all the people who live in that. We can do it. Just we've got a little lack of basic, I think, in the last few years. In fairness, pandemic would help some either. Better than that.
What?
The pandemic.
All right, I think we've beat that up enough. We are not going to take any action on the teaching roster tonight and we lose that, correct?
Yeah.
So let's move on to director's comments. Priscilla? Priscilla, do you have any director's comments?
I'm trying to get myself on there. Um, just consideration for everybody, greatly needed.
Thank you. Jason?
Um, I, I would encourage, e- even if, uh, board members are not on a building and ground committee, I would, uh, encourage you all to come Thursday. Um, the plans, uh, that we saw for the blueprint for this building, um, I was encouraged that we're finally, after a year and a half or maybe longer, um,
Not longer.
The ball seems to be going, so, uh, Andy, I applaud you for that. And, uh, I would like to see that unlike every meeting and let's get this thing going. Um, because the board changes every year, so we want to keep that going. Um, I, I did ask and John, John had, uh, you know, had, um, agreed that for the next meeting, if somebody could, uh, uh, make sure that attendance for, uh, staff is part of the agenda. Um, and, and not, and just, uh, how can we encourage our leaders to be in the building more often? And we don't have, um, young adults teaching other young adults. Um, because I think that's important. Leadership is important and it's lacking. And, uh, you know, just, just reviews, um, you know, I just, I just want to follow policy and procedure. Uh, that's, I'm a pretty, uh, measurable guy. That's how I kind of get through life, have goals and try to meet the goals. Uh, thank you.
Linda?
Just, um, I thought it was a very good first meeting with board members and a very, a lot of information, but I feel like there's a lot of interest in, in, um, in the community, in the buildings and grounds moving forward and all the projects I've been on board for like several years and, and, um, I haven't attended the buildings grounds too much for the reports to come out. It looks like we're moving forward with this, I'm, I'm excited with that.
Nancy?
Um, I just think that things are moving in a positive direction. Um, I'm glad to be a part of this board. What time is that meeting on Thursday?
Five thirty.
Okay.
We're going to be in here.
Yep, and you, okay, thank you.
Sorry.
You're fine. Noon. I'm all set, thank you.
Rob?
Yeah, um, as mentioned, uh, last week, I'm really excited to be working with, uh, the board as it relates to getting, uh, Bellas Falls June High School, uh, on the map, continuing to be on the map. And, uh, for me, I hope that as board members, we're taking the policy approach, but letting our administration and faculty do their job and be there as a support structure. And so for me, I hope that we're doing the policy work necessarily.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, um, I've, uh, had a meeting in recent with, uh, Jim, and how do you pronounce his last name? Bazina. Bazina? Bazin. Bazina, Jim Bazina. Um, he seems like an ace and, uh, obviously he's brought things back from the abyss and now I think is in a good place to start doing some analytical work. And what's wonderful is he's more than willing, uh, to have folks like us in there, uh, to ask questions, to learn. Um, I'm, I'm very urged by that and I plan on being down there a lot.
Good, thank you. Anya?
Oh, I thought this meeting was great. I'm so excited to hear that the science is going to be updated. Um, my whole career started with Mrs. Lewis at that science class and I look at cells all day long because of those science classes that we took in biology. So, um, I just took a look over there and it looks like the same kind of classroom I had maybe 20 years ago. So it looked like it definitely needs updated. I was just hoping maybe, um, um, equipment as well to be updated as well, because, um, those microscopes over there are really old. Um, and I don't know who, who, um, like the compute, I haven't seen the computer room or if there is still a computer room here. Um, but is things updated, um, or is, are things still, you know, 20, 20 years ago stuff?
Yeah, true, man.
But we're one to one now, so every student is offered, is provided a Chromebook. So there isn't a lab anymore, but every student has a device that they bring to class with them.
Yeah, okay. But I'm just.
David?
Well, I got a couple of things. First off, we've been sitting on the waiver donation for two or three years now and we don't actually still have direct guidance as to what is and what is not allowable under waiver. And I think that we need to get that guidance from the superintendent of schools. I am hopeful that we can have a meeting, uh, of the waiver committee to discuss waiver. And in addition to the guidance of what is actually allowed, because for a while we thought the science area was, but it appears it's not. Um, I think we need to have a look at financials on waiver. Okay, I have a note here that says a history lesson. And here's the history lesson. I've been bounced off this board twice. And I'm uncertain if it was after the first time I got bounced off, but second time I got bounced off it. But when I returned to this board, we had a very spanky graduation policy that said, beginning with the class of 2002, students will demonstrate mastery of state standards in order to graduate. I started asking the question of how we were going to, uh, measure mastery and it proved to be a real sticking point. But that board was a creative board back in 2001 or 2002 and they solved the problem very simply by dropping the language which referenced mastery. Okay, now that occurred at kind of an interesting time here in demographically for BFUHS because it was at a period when enrollments in this school and actually schools all over Vermont started to decline. And incidentally, with, um, that decline, we started adding credits. And at that point, I believe we had worked our way up to, um, uh, 28 credits. We went away, uh, from a traditional school schedule to a block schedule, which unfortunately appears in some cases to amount to 45 minutes of instruction and 45 minutes of homework lab. It strikes me as a, shall we say, less than optimum way to, um, uh, educate kids, although it may be the homework lab, it's how you get your homework done. And, um, I'm making these points because, and 28 credits, well, block schedule certainly has an impact on the amount of staffing you need, but 28 credits has a huge impact on whether kids are going to get into the tech centers. And given the fact that state of Vermont requires 21 credits, I'm going to back up 20 years. My advocacy at the time was 21 credits with mastery, okay? Instead of 28 credits with, don't mention the mastery. We, I think, need to reconsider the whole concept of the Carnegie unit, the credit, and decide whether our kids are really best served by the requirement of 28 credits for graduation. What it means that some of the people, just, just like our, uh, tech area, um, are better served by hands-on learning than, you know, sticking it out in the classroom and hating it. Um, I actually have to throw other things to it. Um, I, I would like to, at some point, uh, this spring, get an update on how we're doing with freshman academy. And that leads me into my, my final, um, my final, um, request here. And that is that when we're talking about 21st century learning and how we're going to address the needs of all kids, at least the ones in Wind in Northeast, um, I think that maybe possibly it's time to start talking about fielding an eighth grade academy at the school in addition to our freshman academy. And here's my argument. My two younger sons who both graduated in the top five of their classes, spent their final days in the Bellas Falls Middle School, sitting in Bob Lockerbie's office because most of eighth grade was a waste of time for them because they were not challenged in their coursework. because most of eighth grade was a waste of time for them because they were not challenged in their coursework. I think that we could do, um, a great deal for this community. Um, if we took the high flyers who were ready for it and brought them up here to the high school and gave them, you know, a rigorous academic curriculum along with the necessary supports to make it happen. And, uh, you know, one of the, for me, almost no brainers in that situation is it means it's very likely that we were graduating, um, a number of kids from Bellows Falls Community High School in three years instead of four, which would certainly, I believe, have a positive impact on, uh, taxes and taxpayers. So I would like it if, uh, at some point in time, and, um, and I'm not specific about what the timing is, probably the best place would be at a board retreat, talk about um, what the pros and cons of doing that might be. It would certainly make better use of the staffing that we have in this school in terms of matching teacher numbers with student numbers. And I think that there's a lot of, you know, potential gain in terms of student outcomes from that. And that's all I got to say. And it was probably more than enough. So thank you, Molly.
Thank you. Um, this was a good meeting. We talked about a lot of stuff. We, I really, I hope everybody gets excited about this building the grounds. Um, I really want to see us, you know, keep moving forward and, and keep, you know, getting other people as excited about seeing those plans as those of us that were there were. Um, it's a, it's a huge thing to know that we're going to make some efforts to, to get the school up to where it should have been a long time ago. I went and found this chair in another room because I couldn't sit in the chair here I was sitting in tonight. Um, it's, it's important for everybody. It's important, you know, we talked about our teacher roster, you know, we're asking teachers to teach in places where they're, you know, looking at nineteen seventy Cubbies and that's their wall. Um, you know, part of, a huge part of my job is to make sure that my employees are excited about coming to work every day and that they have a good environment to work in. It's a safe environment and, you know, I, I don't sleep at night, making sure that I'm making all that happen. And so I'm, you know, I hope that we can continue the way we're going. Um, I'm very excited to hear that we've got new board members and everybody's got a little different thing that they're really good at. You know, I'm going to look at Mike for finance help and I'm going to look at Rob every time I think, is this what we really have to be doing with the teacher? Because, because it's, and it's great to have that array of people around us. Um, we've got a good, um, um, a good bunch of people with all different aspects. So it's, it's great. I'm looking forward to a great year. I need a motion to go on an executive session for a personnel matter and a student matter. And we're going into executive session because it would, you know, words, Andy?
Boom.
Oh, here, I have it. Um, to discuss the student and personnel matter where premature public knowledge could place the individual and/or the board at a disadvantage, the superintendent is invited to attend.
Yep. So more?
Yes.
Darcey moved that motion? All those in favor of going to executive session? Priscilla, are you with us?
Uh, yes, I am. I'm sorry. I had stepped out, Priscilla, that it just, because my son called me, but I am right here. Yes.
And everyone else, aye?
Aye.
Aye.